We are all, uh, it's six oh seven PM. This is March twentieth. It's the Southborough Library Board of Trustees. We are all present.
Except for Jane. Yeah.
Oh, except for Jane. So, sorry.
Wasn't going to be here, right?
Okay, so Jane is, Jane is absent. Janet is here, Marguerite's here, Amy is here, Kim is here, and David is here. All right, um, now we're called to order approval of the minutes from February twenty-sixth. What were the amendments?
There was a double period at the end of the paragraph.
Yep.
And one of the sentences just said Eckberg. It didn't identify him as David Eckberg or trustee David Eckberg. So we did both. We split the difference. It says trustee David Eckberg. Now, that was in the line about the legislative breakfast, about going to Midway.
Got it. All right. Um, so do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Just a quick question, please?
Yes, David.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
The elevator incident, uh, there, there was no, uh, legal, uh, aftermath to that. Uh, Ryan, is that correct? Uh, nobody, uh, suing the town for, uh, uh, involuntary, uh, uh, construction or something?
No, but we're gonna, we're, no, but we're gonna, let's vote the minutes and then talk about the elevator and the director's report. How's that?
Yeah, it, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, um, uh, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay, that's Amy. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second from Janet. Go ahead first. All right, Landry, aye?
Yes, Donnie, aye.
Regan, aye.
Eckberg, aye, okay, and Manny?
Aye.
All right, so unanimously accepted as amended, and thank you for the corrections. All right.
Can I just ask a question? In the future, if it's only like an extra period or space, can we just say no substantive changes and vote on it? Like, if it's not meaning?
Um, good question, Amy. The answer is no. You do have to, um, you should review any changes to draft minutes that were mailed out, because then it becomes subject to, are the emails that contain the draft minutes are subject to open meeting law as well. So I realize it's archaic, but that's, I have checked on this and we, we should, it's good to go over the corrections.
Okay, good questions. And then when it shows up in the minutes for this meeting, it's Scrivener's changes, like.
It's, that was, but Amy brings up a good point, because the changes were very qu- quick and easy for this one. They typically are more, they're somewhat more involved in other meetings, so that's.
A couple of quick questions, if I might, please, uh, for, again, on the, um, on the minutes in the last meeting, the self-evaluation of, of yours, uh, or, or is that still i- in motion somewhere?
Yes, we're, I'm not gonna be able to submit a self-evaluation until, that's, it's, it's also, that's good, because we can dispose of that agenda item, if that's okay with you, Marguerite, because it's there, is, there, there has been no opportunity for me to even open up the blank document to start my self-evaluation at this point, so that I'm hoping to get it to you by the April meeting.
Right, we'll, we'll table it till the April meeting. Okay, so director's report, Ryan.
Wait a minute, I got one more, a little, little petty point here.
Okay.
It's a pollinator garden issue. Uh, I, I'm sure that all of you noticed it has become an unholy mess. And, um, I, I'm hoping that, that to the extent that we continue to, uh, share our precious little piece of real estate with other organizations that do a better job, sorry to sound so cynical, but, uh, do a better job of, uh, cleaning it up. It's, it's, it's been a mess for a long time.
Okay, good. Duly noted. Thank you, and it's now part of the record. Okay. Ryan, director's report. What do you have?
Uh, any questions on budget piece in the director's report? I just wanted to tell you we're floating just under twenty-six K now, because we got an additional bill for some of those Vox, assistive reader books that Kim buys, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up is that since we're at twenty-six K for materials expenditures, and we're also, um, in March, um, is that typically, I talked to you guys about using the Mary Faye Fund, which is a fund that's set up, it was sort of a bequestment, which is specific request, right? I'm saying it wrong, but like, it was a restricted fund that was set up specifically to buy books. So as we get closer to the budget, I like to check in with you guys about this, because we may, um, we may see if, um, uh, to vote to authorize any funds, if we have overages over the budget. I'm not doing, I did a horrible job explaining that, but you know.
No, we all got it. We, we, we grabbed it. Thank you.
Um, Friends of the Southborough Library, the cash, they talked about the copy machine in their last meet. A lot of this is about the Friends meeting, because it was a two-hour meeting, so there is a lot about the Friends in this, only because they made a lot of forward momentum on a lot of different projects, but they will pay the service contract, they will take the revenue from the copy machine. So that's one thing that can be, we can cross off the list.
That's fabulous. That's great. Thank you to the Friends. Other things we need to know, Ryan, from that?
Going back to David's question about the elevator, there's been no additional incidents, the elevator, that I'm aware of. I also have not received any follow-up from the patrons who, um, were stuck in the elevator, uh, for the, the, it was for ten minutes, too. I went, I'm not minimizing it, I'm just letting you know that's how long it was. I, they do know my name, and they can follow up with me if they had any questions. I am not aware that there is any legal action that could be taken as a result of that, but that's more of a question. I can check with the town's attorney, if you're concerned, David.
Uh, were, uh, were they residents of Southborough?
I believe so. I can double-check with Kim.
No, I think, I think all's well that ends well, and I, I, let's just hope that they can chalk it up to a really good family story.
I don't know if they've been in since then, and I definitely don't think they've used the elevator.
Can't say blame. Did you call them to see if things was okay?
No, but Kim has a better relationship with them, because it's a family that comes in with young children, so, um, I can, I can talk to Kim, and maybe Kim could reach out.
No, I'm, I'm hoping everything's.
Yeah, is it, would you prefer that, just to see, make sure they're doing okay, and everything's okay? I'm fine with, with following up.
Yep, that sounds like a good idea. I mean, it's certainly not exactly due to, um, anybody's, uh, making the problem. It was just one.
Uh, the, the branches from DPW are pretty self-explanatory. Um, I also just wanted to.
Say, I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, I don't think you should reach out. If they don't have a problem, I wouldn't make it into a problem. It's been a while. It was last meeting, so.
Okay, I mean, I, that was kind of where I was at, Amy, too. Um, is everybody okay with that?
Sleeping dogs lie, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, maybe, maybe we'll wait until they come in, and just check in if next time they're in the library, and I'll, I'll maybe have Ki- if Kim and I are both here at the same time, maybe Kim could give me a heads up, and I could just go say hi. Maybe we'll kind of leave it like that.
Or just check with Kim and see if they've said anything. See if they've been in, see if they've said anything.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Okay. Um, branches for DPW are self-explanatory. I wanted to let you know we have a new liaison with MPC. I try to go to those meetings when I can. So I did reach out, Orla reached out to me.
I lost the audio.
You did?
Turn the audio.
There you go. Okay.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me, David?
I can now, yes, thank you.
Okay. So Orla's our new liaison, a bunch of the Friends updates on the fundraisers that they have planned, so I wanted to let you guys know that. One of the reasons I'm bringing it up in the director's report is that we do a kind of have the area on the library's website. We are probably gonna use the library channels to advertise the fundraisers. The funds that they're raising directly go into largely summer reading programs, which we're kind of getting ready for. So I didn't know if there were any objections to me continuing work with the Friends on helping to publicize some of the fundraisers.
Makes perfect sense. I mean, they're part of the library.
Right.
So the, the sweatshirt fundraiser will launch on Saturday. So they'll, I don't know if Friends are gonna be kind of on hand at the meeting, but we are gonna start putting up information as early as Monday online about what they can do, and then there'll be thirty days that the sweatshirts that the Friends purchased for the staff for holiday gifts can be purchased from members of the public. Um, the hooded sweatshirts will be forty dollars, doesn't matter on the size, doesn't matter if it's kids or adults. Um, and the T-shirts, there's gonna be T-shirt form of it that's gonna be available for twenty-five dollars. This is part of the fundraising wing of Custom Inc., so this was all kind of preset. But Liz Zulik, who's one of the newer members of the Friends, she was the one who originally organized it, helped design the sweatshirt, and she's taken the lead on the fundraiser. So her focus is on, on helping them with that one, and then you can see they kind of have successive ones, so though, I'll be able to kind of check in with you guys, um, more next month, because we'll already, I think the Orla thing will either be happening or be about to happen, so. Uh, candidate's night, so there's a quick update on that. Um, we're not gonna end up having Betsy be the moderator. Uh, Marguerite, Janet, and I, um, all were in communication with her, uh, and Betsy's declined this year, so, um, I did kind of talk to Janet, and Janet has offered to moderate again, um, similar to last year. Janet's the only person offering at the moment.
Anybody else wants to do it, they're welcome.
Janet's the only one with experience, and the, who did a great job last time, so.
Thank you. Yeah, you did a wonderful job.
Everybody takes two steps back, right?
Right, and we'll all, we'll all be food providing as previously, and, um, that's always fun, so.
Yeah, the Friends did vote to authorize helping to fund refreshments, because I said I was gonna reach out to them after the last meeting, so that's positive. They're, they'll go up to two hundred dollars if we need it, which is great. We probably won't use all of that, and then, um, we did look at Cordova for the twenty-fourth, so that's all reserved and booked. Um, there may be a race. It's still kind of pending, so we won't know until we get closer to the event. But, um, there may be, there's multiple people who have pulled hu- uh, papers for the Housing Authority. So there may be a Housing Authority race, and then Select Board, so just sort of based on, um, past experience, and I'm gonna kind of work with Janet on this, is we usually end with Select Board. Um, so we'll probably do, if there is a race for Housing Authority, probably do that first, and then the program will be slightly longer, which I, it's usually there's at least two races, so it'll be nice if that's the, the, what ends up shaping out to happen. Uh, just a quick thing, I, I mentioned the MCPPO thing again, only because there's gonna be a cost. I'm trying to determine exactly how much the renewal cost would be. There is, um, a possibility that it can be funded through our professional development budget this year, because we haven't really, we still have money to spend, and the renewal is not as high as, um, the initial classes to take. So that's the other reason I want to renew it, because we may be going into a construction period with potential bid. Um, bidding, right, and I just would like to refresh my skills, A, but also, um, if we loo- if I lose the designation, I have to do everything all over again, and it's three classes, and it's almost triple the cost.
What's the amount?
I think it's gonna, it's like, something like to renew, it's like seven hundred dollars, I think. I don't know, it looks like there's two separate costs, so that's what I'm, I might have to call the, um, Inspector General Office just to get clarification, but I think it's like I have to sign up for one thing, and then there's a overall cost for the.
Well, certainly worth it if, if we're going into, um, construction and design, I think. That's my feeling about it. Anybody else? Want to weigh in?
I'll keep you posted. I, I'm just mentioning it, because if it, if we don't have enough professional development money, I'll kind of come back and say, you know, would it be possible to fund the state aid, which I don't think you'll object to, but I'd like to let you know if that's gonna be the case. I do have to look at doing this probably in the next couple of months, because I think I got my designation in July in two thousand and one, and it expires every three years, so.
I think it makes sense for you to keep up the designation, if you're willing.
Definitely.
Agreed.
Any other thoughts? It sounds to me like it's a, be, yeah, exactly, it would be a mistake to let it go at this point, so.
Okay.
I'm all right on that. Okay, um, expense report, anything we need to know?
No, I talked about the materials money, which is always my focus. There is a little bit of money in some of the other line items, so we're kind of shaping up, um, how to spend some of those. Um, I don't, I think some of them, we're waiting for bills to come in, because they don't come in until later in the year, so, um, I, you know, I'm just gonna keep you updated, but the, the budget amount is getting lower and lower, and you're gonna see as we continue taking payroll out, it's just gonna get smaller and smaller. So we're really, we're about to go into kind of the last quarter of the fiscal year, so that's when I start kind of tightening things up a little bit, so. Um, we have been able to really fund most of the things that we want. I know that Mariana came in with, um, a program request, and that was in the director's report. We're seeing if we can fund that out of a community fund mini-grant, but that's another possibility where, um, if we don't, I don't, I think they'll probably, um, authorize it, but if they don't, we may come back, um, and ask for it out of state aid, if that's.
It sounds like it's under, it sounds like the budget's under control, and, uh, getting spent down at, at the appropriate speed. All right, so.
I could say I'm not concerned about anything.
Yeah.
If that helps, okay.
Can I, a quick question, uh, the, the, uh, negative variance on, uh, professional development? I happen to be a big supporter of professional development in my current and former lives. Is, is that something that, it's not that we need to go spend it just because it's authorized, but is, is that something that we can, uh, close the gap on here in the, in the fourth quarter?
Yeah, it, so that really will probably be mostly spent on the MCPPO designation. So I mean, that's a good thing to bring up, though, David, because the Massachusetts Library Association Conference this year, which is in May, I believe, is in Framingham. And the last time it was in Framingham, I believe that Kim and I and Mariana, I think Mary, Mariana may not have gone to that one, but I know we all have interest in going to different aspects of the conference. Kim and I have been invited as speakers. We talked about the Story Walk one year, but I haven't submitted any panels. I haven't been part of anything. So I don't know if there's gonna be like conference attendance costs, or if they're gonna have to renew MLA dues, but I will give you that feedback if we get there. And again, they may not wanna go. I haven't really, I, I think they will have interest, because it's so vocal this year, to be honest, so.
It's not a lot of money, but I happen to think it's one of the most important things we can do to, uh, uh, upgrade our, our, our wonderful staff.
Included, Ryan, all right. Okay, so let's, let's move on then to the, uh, item number four, which is the Mass Public Library Construction Program. Ryan, what do you have for us?
Things are going okay. Um, the building project area of the website has gotten updates every day. Um, there was some helpful stuff that Jane suggested and sent me on some of the population figures. Uh, did you know that since nineteen ninety, the town has grown about thirty-six percent in population? That is now available on the building page. If you're wondering how big the, the town has gotten population-wise versus the last time we added space to the library, right? So that shows you, we expanded to serve the amount of residents in that period, which was about sixty-four hundred, and now we're serving a community of over ten thousand four hundred.
They're really overcrowded. And P.S., speaking of the library page, and in terms of that, um, with the Municipal Technology Committee survey, um, the library pages showed that there was some concern that the collection was not big enough, and that's totally a function of shelf space. So that wouldn't hurt to mention. That would be, we, we weed out books every time we weed, and there's no room for them, and they have to go. So, uh, I think, I think some, we could probably pick data out of that, um, that would help the case, um, uh, on the, on that page.
Yeah, if you haven't been to it in the past couple of days, there is an area called Needs and Challenges that's been added. That was a narrative we really started to develop that talked about, um, the overall scope of kind of why we were asking, um, for it. There was also a bulleted list, which Jane Davis provided. I'll also say, we kind of looked at questions that Kim Regan had sent me quite a while, actually, which we got to later than I wanted to, but we started trying to answer a lot of those questions. I mean, a big thing that's an X-factor about this is the cost, because we really need to develop, we need to get the public input as part of a more focused, um, like sort of community feedback piece, once the project manager and the architects are on board. Once that comes out, I really do think it's important for us to have a few different iterations, similar to what Janet and I were doing as part of the Community Center, um, Exploration Committee, is to kind of look at maybe what is the most affordable version of the library, if we can, I don't, I want to develop a different way to describe that, if that makes sense, but maybe like a bare bones, we're adding square footage, and then kind of, on the other end, is look at like the library in the sky, is adding every single thing that we possibly could want that fulfills every user need that we could ever anticipate for the next thirty years. What I suspect is that we will really find a happy media somewhere in the middle, based on what is really important to the community as part of those public input sessions. Once we get that information, we can really start hashing out a lot of the costs. You know, that, so a- again, the, the cost is, the director chats that I hosted, I had one person come to, yes, last evenings, it was Betsy Rosenplum. Um, so she came, and I chatted with her for quite a while. Um, you know, I didn't get a great response. I am kind of doing proactive outreach this week, even though it's right before town meeting, but I'm going to see the Doll Men's Club at the Senior Center at ten AM on Friday. So I'm also gonna talk to them, get some feedback from them, kind of talk about the project, and see what their concerns are. So even though a lot of this work will continue past Saturday, I am still sort of actively working on everything, because I, I don't think this is ever gonna stop up until we go for the request, so.
Um, apropos of that, if, if the rest of the board doesn't mind, could we move the agenda item called Annual Town Meeting twenty twenty-four to come right now, because I think that that's part of the pitch that we'll be doing for town meeting for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I think it makes sense to, to talk about how we're gonna present at town meeting, and wha- how we're gonna sell this, because it's coming up on us very quickly. And I think they're related, because we can, um, look at the construction programs all we want to, but if town meeting says no, then we're, um, we're right back where we started. So Ryan, do you have any thoughts about the, the town meeting presentation that you could share?
So I, I knew, one of the other things that I kind of went back and forth with is that this, the presentation and the handout isn't, is a little bit of what we do every year, right? It's very much an overview of the library, and it's kind of highlighting some of the successes, but also kind of pointing people to the fact that we do have an article at this town meeting, and we are sort of roughly asking for support. I do think one directly leads into the other. I think by kind of highlighting the value and all of the things that the library provides, it's very important that that's fresh in people's minds before we go for a request. I, I mean, there has been support from, let me make sure I get the list, the Select Board, the Friends of the Southborough Library, who don't usually vote on things like this unanimously supported it, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Advisory Committee, which just released a financial report where they talked about the fact that this was supplemented by the grant money, made it kind of an attractive building project. Again, because there's not gonna be another building project that gets this amount of state funding if we move forward with it, so. I, 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 I don't know if I'm leaving any groups out. I, I think the, I haven't talked specifically to Municipal Technology, but we did talk about the need to.
David asked Planning Board, does the Planning Board support it?
I don't know. I, that was not a board that I, I went to, so, and I'm on MPC, and I don't think we ever talked directly about the building project. I mean, the people who vet things before town meeting have all reviewed this, and then unanimously approved it.
Yeah, however, however, call me paranoid, but I have seen, and I'm sure everyone else has seen, articles that were supported by all the town boards not pass. So I think paranoia is the way to go here.
But that was part of the reason why we did the director chats. It's part of the reason why we've, I've made myself available prior to these, and it's part of the reason why I'm still doing an outreach visit before. And again, I can't talk to every single resident who's gonna be at the town meeting before the town meeting, but I think we've, I, I mean, adding the stuff to the website and trying to get the information as public as we can has been a key factor in something where if we do get opposition on Saturday, I am gonna kind of bring it up, is that there's been opportunities to provide feedback. There is information that's been available.
I, tr- town meeting is fantastic, but you never know which way the mood's gonna go. What are the, what are the plans for the actual, um, uh, presentation? You're doing the Peggy Tuttle, and then you're doing the pitch, uh, twelve hours later.
Yeah, so the present, so I, we, we were, Marguerite and I attended the mock town meeting, so I initially, because this is how I do it every year, I had kind of the library presentation, which had the overview, and then we end with the Peggy Tuttle Award, because that's how they've requested. I've done it in the past. This year, because the Article Twelve is specifically related to the library, I was asked to break it up. So prior to the meeting starting, I will be awarding, I would doing the Peggy Tuttle Award presentation as its own entity, and that's with a number of other groups that are just giving brief updates. The library piece was kind of the overview, and the drafts that I've sent you that have the pictures of all the kids upstairs, sitting in the program space, looking crowded and happy, but some sad, because they're all on top of each other. That is, that's gonna be presented right before Article Twelve, and then there is a request for support after that.
All right, and Jane will be up there with you, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
And anybody present at the meeting can come up with us onstage if they're a trustee, but you can also go to the mics in the audience and respond there.
All right.
And I know not everybody's gonna be there, but.
Yes, some of us are in Florida, yes.
I, yeah, I appreciate support and spirit, I'll say as well, so.
Okay, I am looking for the articles that are going to be on the consent agenda, which I know I.
Article Twelve is not on the consent agenda.
Right, 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 but I'm just.
I think, is it okay? I think Janet had a question, Marguerite.
Yes, Janet, sorry.
You're muted.
Sorry, the dog was barking. Um, I don't want us to get overconfident, but historically, the library has been very well supported at town meeting. Um, you know, if anything, you know, there are times that we asked for more money than the selectmen wanted us to ask for, and it passed. Um, so, I, so we shouldn't be too nervous, but we shouldn't be overconfident either, but it's historically not been hard to get library asks approved.
Well, several years ago, I, I kind of was in the hot seat, Janet, when we went for the CPA article, but that was for a substantial amount of money. The project was over a million dollars at that point. And even though CPA money had been collected from the tax base, it, I, I will say, because you can go back and you can watch that video, and I was telling David earlier today, it's kind of fun, because I think at one point you can see my face kind of turning purple a little bit. I, I was up there for an hour. Um, and we, we had the architect there who helped us with the feasibility study, and I believe our project manager was on stage, too, and they responded to questions. The, that wasn't about the merits of the project itself. That was more about logistic issues behind how the warrant article was worded. So that, that wa- it wasn't even about the library or the value that the library brings. I, I really have anticipated, I think, every question that could come up. I looked at the responses to the survey. We've made the survey responses, um, publicly available, so.
Right, Ryan, I have, I have a question for you from the town meeting floor. Approximately, how much is it going to cost the town to build a new library or an addition?
That cost is yet to be determined.
That's what we need planning money for.
That's why we're here today with this request, so that we can afford an MPLCP level of library design and come back at a future. And come back at a future town meeting with a, a financially responsible request. All of you residents.
Well done, alright. Good.
But, but to Janet's point and to Marguerite's point. I hope I just sound confident and not overconfident, only because I really have prepared for this, and I have. Again, I can't, I don't know what I don't know, I, I. What I can tell you is that nobody has brought to my attention that they have any serious issue with this. And I will say, the conversation with Betsy was illuminating, only because I think. She really did have a lot of questions, and a lot of her questions were good, and she hadn't been to the website. And she hasn't been following anything in the meetings, so it was really like, kind of like starting with somebody from. Like a baseline of, I know you're looking for money to expand the library, why? And I think that conversation was helpful for me, I will say, in how to structure that, and then I really, you know, I'm a talker. That's always my downfall in meetings here, and I apologize to all of you about that, but I am gonna be succinct when I'm on stage. Because I don't like to be on mic any more than I have to be, so I'm gonna try, when somebody asks a question, I'm gonna try to answer it. And that's where I'm gonna go from there.
Sounds good, sounds great, alright, any other questions about town meeting aside from, we're all going to go, if we, uh. Except for Janet, right, because she's actually got a, a southern life right now, I'm so jealous anyway, um, but that.
But she'll be back tomorrow?
No.
No, Monday or Tuesday.
No, no.
No?
Janet will be with us in spirit.
Janet will be with us in spirit.
Okay, okay.
Alright, on the phone, probably.
I'll watch the recording after, probably.
There you go, that's an exciting way to spend an evening, anyway. Uh, alright, so can we move on to Staff Appreciation Week? Is that okay with everybody, are we ready to do? Let's do that, Amy, do you wanna speak to that, please?
Sure, but there's really not, nothing to say, everybody replied they're ready to go, and. You know, I don't think there's much more to know than that, but thank you.
We're all looking forward to it, and we hope it has.
The one, the one thing I'll say, so there's two follow-ups that I was supposed to do, that I failed to do. One was about the Friends Bulletin Board, I can tell you that Mariana and Libby spent a significant amount of time working with Carol. On doing a seed exchange, um, announcements for the Bulletin Board. So they were, did wanna leave it up through April, I don't know if we're gonna do the same Post-it Bulletin Board this year. As we did the previous year, at this point, I would say no, because a significant amount of work was done on the seed exchange. And I would like to continue to advertise that for now, if that's okay. Um, it was also Mary who really took the lead on doing the board last year. And I, her focus right now is maybe on a upcoming election, so I think it's good to keep it, keep that focus there for this year. Then, I did not, I didn't have really time, but I also failed to talk to Beth about putting. Um, the item on the agenda for the Friends, about asking Diana and Sandy Pocheapen, um, about providing. Flowers for the staff, so they are meeting on the Wednesday night of the week, the Staff Appreciation is occurring. So I think what'll happen is, they'll probably check in about that, I'm gonna talk to everybody in advance. And I think the flowers might be something that the staff get at the end of the event, so that's kind of, I'm hoping we can still make it happen. It might be the week after, but that is just, I kind of dropped the ball on that one, so I'm sorry.
Well, fl- the flowers were lovely, um, um, flowers, plants, I'm sure we can improvise between all of the involved parties to come up with something. That was similarly fabulous, so there we are, any other thoughts about that, Amy, thank you for taking point. And very efficiently sending around what was needed, and, um, I'm looking forward to it, I think it's gonna be great.
Staff loves it, so it's great.
Yes, it's, it's a mutual admiration event, there you go. Alright, um, so the town meeting, we don't, blah, 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 Candidates Night, uh. That's not for a while, but what else do we need to know to do, Janet, before?
I think, unless someone has other feedback, I think that the plan we had last year worked, and. You know, things went smoothly, we had two contested races then as well.
Yep.
Um, I think this sounds a little more manageable, because last time we had three for school board and five for select person. Um, although one, two weren't able to come, but we had to show a movie of what, so I, I think it's just gonna be logistically easier this year.
It sounds great.
And, uh, that's it.
Uh, what about, um, the, um, videoing of it, the streaming of it, um.
Access Media, and they are able to film it, I don't know that we'll be able to livestream it, I don't know that they can do that. But I, I have talked to Terry and the turnaround for the video, we are, if we do it on the twenty-fourth, the benefit of doing it. Kind of early-ish, um, that's kind of early-ish for us, we usually do it the last week of April, the first week of May. And this is like slightly before that, so, and that was really in case there's a conflict, we have to move, to be honest, that was part of the rationale, but, um. Uh, Terry can do the twenty-fourth, I know that, and then we can get the video up pretty quick after that. So the idea will be that if you couldn't attend in person, you'll be able to view the video.
That sounds fantastic, that sounds really good, so Janet, uh, sounds like if it goes as well as last year, we're gonna have another successful event, and.
I'm just gonna dig out the email I sent and update it and, uh, sit down with Ryan at some point to just make sure we've got all the little pieces together, but, um, not worried about it.
I should say for the minutes for Mariana, it's Terry Newman from Southboro Access Media, that was, sometimes I drop names and I don't. I don't identify who they are, and then Mariana and I have to meet, because I didn't do that in the meeting. So that's, and for you guys who don't know, Terry Newman is the Director of Southboro Access Media and has filmed in the past other Candidates Night and other library events.
Sounds good, okay, so do we have any, um, the last category is public comment. Do we have anybody who wants to ask a question from the public, I'm looking here to see.
No, there's nobody in the attendees, Margaret.
Oh, okay, good.
Not even Mr. Stivers?
No, Mr. Stivers is not attending, so there you are. Oh, well, there you go, um, so, do we have any other business which shall properly come before the board with us tonight?
Hey Janet, I just wanted to know, this is the most, least important thing we've talked about, but it's awfully hard for me to see you on, on. On the screen, I don't know what the light situation is there, but just so you know, it's hard to see you.
Okay, I won't be here next month. I'll be back at Southboro, so.
She's coming back so that you can see her, that's what's happening, alright, okay, well, listen, uh, do we have any other, um, business, no?
Aside from that. I can, if you would prefer, I can send something out about scheduling the next meeting.
Oh.
After this meeting, because we haven't done that, we've been going.
Oh, yeah, what have we got, it's, it's gonna be very calm after town meeting, but let's think, so, um. Let's see. Uh, the, the third Wednesday is the seventeenth.
I may have a conflict on Wednesday nights too, for a while.
Okay, and Kim, you were, you were saying?
It's school vacation week.
Vacation week.
Oh, duh, sorry, um, well, the twenty-fourth is Candidates Night.
I know.
So, do we need to meet on the tenth? Or do, can we skip and just?
Are we locked into Wednesday nights?
No.
I would prefer a Thursday, if that's a possibility for anybody, but I, I also wanna check with Jane, that's part of the reason I wanna take it. Um, to check in with you guys after, if that's okay, because there has been a. A couple of meetings where we've scheduled what Jane couldn't do, so I kind of wanna check on her availability, cuz I promised her I would do that. Before we do the next one.
Alright, that's good, so we'll just do it by email?
Yeah, I might send out like a doodle poll if we have to, but it'll probably be through email, I'll shoot a couple of dates and then we'll, we'll do it that way.
Good, sounds like a plan, alright.
And I will motion to adjourn, Marguerite?
Yes, thank you, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Bye, everyone, I'm going to another meeting.
We can, we can have a forty-five minute meeting, everyone.
The record, is this the record?
Do we vote then? Do we have to give our vote, yes?
Oh, yes, God, Landry, aye.
Yes, Donnie, aye.
Jeff Berg, aye.
Regan, aye.
Maybe, aye.
Alright, everyone, thanks a lot, see you soon.
Enjoy your weaning Florida days, Janet.
Oh, my God, alrighty, bye.
Pack everything in.
Yeah, bye, everybody.
Okay.
Bye, see you Saturday.
Ryan, you gonna call me? Okay.